You ready?
I am.
Okay. I'd like to call this March 18, 2013 Board of Education Regular Meeting to Order. Mr. Tepper?
Mrs. Bissinger.
Here.
Mr. Fruman.
Here.
Mrs. Hubner.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Dr. Heiss.
Here. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. My Pledge of Allegiance.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to thank everyone for coming. A quick safety briefing here. We do have, in the event of an emergency, we have three exits off to your right, and we do have one exit up front here to my right. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda?
Second.
Mr. Tepper?
Mrs. Bissinger.
Yes.
Mr. Fruman.
Yes.
Mrs. Hubner.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Dr. Heiss.
Yes. Next up is approval of minutes of the previous regular meeting on February 25.
Move to approve the minutes from the February 25 meeting.
Second.
Mr. Tepper?
Mr. Fruman.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Bissinger.
Yes.
Mrs. Hubner.
Yes.
Dr. Heiss.
Yes. Next up is correspondence. Do you have any correspondence?
Yes, we do, Dr. Heiss.
Jackson?
We'd like to share a piece of information that we received from Debbie Terhar, who's the President of the State Board of Education, as well as Michael Sawyers, who is the Acting Superintendent of Public Instruction. We received this earlier in the month, but it says, "Forrest Hill School System, on behalf of the State Board of Education and the Ohio Department of Education, we congratulate you on your district's exemplary performance during the 2011-12 school year, achieving the ranking of excellent with distinction and excellent for 12 consecutive years on 2011-12 local report card as a testament to the hard work and dedication of your teachers, your staff, your students, and of course, your parents and community. We understand that the process to finalize the results of 2011-12 school year has delayed celebrating your success, and we appreciate your patience. Congratulations again on your achievement and best wishes for continued success for this school year." Again, Debbie Terhar, President of the State Board of Education, and Michael Sawyers, Acting Superintendent of Public Instruction.
Great, thank you. Mr. Tepper? All right, next up, procedures for public commentary. The regular meetings of the Board of Education are not public meetings, but meetings held in public. We do welcome your comments. If you would like, you can fill out a green card up front. Those are available there. They'll bring them up, and when we get to public commentary, I'll recognize you, and we will go from there. Next up, again, the best part always of these meetings is our commendations and recognitions. We'll start with Mr. Broadwater and Peggy, although she's not on here.
It's my honor to introduce a young lady who received the Prudential Achievement. She is not able to be here this evening, but every year, the top high school and middle level youth volunteers in each state in the District Columbia are selected as state honorees. Each receives a $1,000 award, an engraved silver medallion, and an all-expense-paid trip to Washington, D.C. for several days of national recognition events. In addition, two to 10 runners-up in each state are named distinguished finalists and receive a bronze medallion. And the reason I say that is Anderson and Forrest Hill School District is proud to recognize Erica Ladrigan, who's a senior at Anderson High School, as a distinguished finalist in Ohio for the 2013 Prudential Spirit of Community Award. Her project type was helping and comforting the sick. She founded Creating Smiles for Kids. It is recommended the Board commend Erica Ladrigan for achievement and distinction, and a certificate of commendation be presented to her, even though she could not attend this evening.
I move that we commend Erica Ladrigan for her two million distinction for the project. Second.
Mr. Tepper?
Mrs. Bissinger.
Yes.
Mrs. Hubner.
Yes.
Mr. Fruman.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Dr. Heiss.
Yes. Next up is Peggy and Mike.
Yes.
I'm Ma.
Every year, we do have the distinct honor and pleasure, again, here in the Forrest Hill School District, and Mike and I have tonight of recognizing national merit semifinalists with the National Merit Scholarship Program. It starts out with about 1.5 million students taking the test. The top 50,000 then do get into the process of being selected either as a commended or a semifinalist. This allows our students to earn scholarship money, as well as recognition for their superior academic achievement and academic promise in their college education. Tonight, we have, and we're asking the Board to recognize and commend Alison Gredon from Turpin High School and...
And Emily Clausen from Anderson High School.
Alison is not here, but I believe Emily is here.
Is Emily here? Monica?
Yes. I move that we commend Emily Clausen from Anderson and Alison Gredon from Turpin High School, who have been finalists in the 2013 National Merit Scholarship Program.
Second.
Mr. Tepper?
Mrs. Bissinger.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Fruman.
Yes.
Mrs. Hubner.
Yes.
Dr. Heiss.
Next item on the agenda is the Ohio Middle Level Educator of the Year. Dr. Jackson?
Yes, it gives me great pleasure tonight to recognize the Nagel Middle School teacher. Her name is Patricia Grove. So Pat, would you like to come up here for a moment while I say some things? Thank you. Pat Grove was recently nominated by Principal Natasha Adams for this particular honor. I'd just like to read a few comments from that particular recommendation letter for everyone to hear. Patricia Grove is an exceptionally dedicated, knowledgeable, and skilled teacher, has been a teacher leader in the Forrest Hill School District since 1978. Patricia has the respect, the admiration of students, parents, and colleagues and community members because she gives so much on behalf of her students. Her career has been spent in the Forrest Hill School District at Anderson High School and Nagel Middle School, where she began as a reading specialist and then transitioned into teacher of social studies. Patricia, through her career, has been focused on addressing unique needs of young adolescent learners and serving beyond her role as a classroom teacher. She is devoted to being a lifelong learner and shares this passion of learning with her students and colleagues. In her classroom, she uses active learning projects which link history to students' broader interest. Patricia Grove finds innovative ways to use primary sources, integrate technology, and give students opportunities to debate and fully develop historical thinking and skills. Mrs. Grove encourages students to use their understanding of history to become engaged and informed citizens in their community and beyond. Patricia Grove sees teaching as a calling and a way to give back to the community. She never expects any kind of recognition for her efforts. Too bad. And her efforts and works beyond the scenes diligently to touch the future of our students. The best reflection of Patricia Grove's abilities and talents lies in the respect she has among the students, staff, colleagues, and community members. Please join me in congratulating Mrs. Patricia Grove as being honored for her accomplishments and being named the 2013 Middle Level Educator of the Year in Ohio.
I move that we commend Pat Grove for achievement and distinction, and a certificate of commendation be presented to her.
Second.
Mr. Tepper?
Mrs. Hubner.
Yes.
Mr. Fruman.
Yes.
Mrs. Bissinger.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Dr. Heiss.
Yes.
I had Mrs. Grove as a reading tutor. I know. Turned into an English teacher.
Pat? Pat?
Thank you very much for this recognition. I just want to take a minute to thank Natasha Adams for nominating me for this honor, and I would also like to thank the Board. About 13 years ago, you took a leap of faith into promoting middle school-level education for Forrest Hill students, and for the past 13 years, it has been probably the best thing that this district has ever done. So I really want to thank you. Without you, I wouldn't have been able to get this award. Thanks.
Are there any other green cards out there?
There'll be one in the back.
Okay. All right.
Want to bring it for me?
All right. Yep, we got it. First up, Garth Peterson?
My name's Garth Peterson. I'm a volunteer to zoo and also a substitute teacher. Recently, at a professional meeting, I found out that my professional friend, Dr. Samarco, does an excellent drug abuse informational talk, and I was going to ask the Forrest Hills District to have the appropriate personnel consider having her come in and talk to especially the high schools, because she's a remarkable speaker and very knowledgeable. So I'd like to make that known to the group, and I've got a contact information thing here.
Thank you. Thank you, Garth.
Good evening. I feel like here I go again. Local resident, my kids all went through the process and through Forrest Hills, got great educations, went on to college, son got a full scholarship, good program. Nothing I can say bad about Forrest Hill Schools, but here we go again. Last year, we passed a levy. A decent levy, a small levy. I was on the finance committee, excuse me, and worked on it. Wasn't thrilled with putting the levy through, but you know, it was small enough, it wasn't going to hurt anybody. The economy was slow, but it was a good thing to do. Well, two promises were made to us. Number one, this would buy us three years. No more money. We'd give us this money now, and we'll be good for three to five years. And number two, even if we pass this levy, we're going to cut $2 million off the budget, and we're going to do that, and neither one of those things happened. A year later, here we are, back up again. Now, let's go for another little levy, and there'll be another one after this one, too, trust me. In two years, at the rate we're spending, by 2015, '16, we're going to need another levy. It just keeps going and going as retired man trying to retire. I mean, my choices are move to Claremont County or, you know, go back to work, because my taxes exceed my mortgage payments. I don't know where it ends. I'm not saying we don't need a facilities plan. We've been studying facilities for 20 years. Rick Newman and Newman and everybody else, we've been on committee after committee, consultants, surveys, demographic studies, voter studies. We didn't use one bit of that. This plan has nothing to do with any bit of the facility studies or any of the consultant studies we've accreted. There's not one thing in this. This is a list of roofs, parking lots, air conditioners, oh, and by the way, safety, that's about $2 million of 47, and $14 million for Wilson. You know, we've been talking, they kind of sneak that in, 28 percent of this, 47 million. So the important items are 34 percent, and the rest of it is projects. And I'm not even sure they're capital projects that are legally put on as bond issues, but you know, we're putting them on as a big bond. Let's get $47 million, let's spend it. It's got to stop. I mean, I don't know what, you know, we've got a couple of real estate people here, friends of mine, but you know, you get to a point when the taxes get so high, you know, our market value is already down. It's down all over Hamilton County, we're no different. With taxes going up, it's just going to make it more and more difficult to move our houses. And I want to downsize. I can't downsize, because I can't sell my house for what I bought it for, built it for 15 years ago. You know, we said we're going to cut spending. Spending went from 70 million to 73 million in the last two years. It just keeps going and going and going. We can't balance a budget. We've only balanced the budget once in the last five years. You know, there's three board seats up in November. I encourage everybody here, it's time. It's time for a change. We need some business people up here. Good people, devoted. This is a thankless job, but it's time to get some business people up here who know how to run a business and how to spend money, because I can't afford this anymore. And I don't know if we're going to be able to sell our houses if we have six, $7,000 a year tax bills. You know, this program, I believe, is a mistake, and I encourage everybody to pass it on and pass it down. By putting up in May is just a way, because there's nothing else on the ballot in May, so the parents and the PTA members know about this levy coming up, but the average person, your neighbors, they don't even know about this, because 60 percent of the population of Anderson don't have kids in the school. And so they're not even hearing about this. I really encourage the Board and administration to send out a note to the voters. Let's get a fair vote here. Let's let the people know there's even something coming up in May, because I guess 30 percent of the population of Anderson doesn't even know there's an election on May 7. But I know, and I know it's the wrong thing, I think we need to do something about our facilities. I'm not sure we need six elementary schools, and I know that's not popular, but you know, all the consultants and all the studies did not lead us to this list of goodies. I mean, there's pages and pages of roofs and changing the direction of a parking lot and air conditioners in a 50-year-old building. How efficiently do you think we're going to air condition a 50-year-old building? And who's going to pay for that electricity? My time's running down. Thank you.
Thank you. LeAnn Starks?
Well, I'm one of those friends Mr. Schiano was talking about. I went to school with Donna and PJ, and I'm lucky, I have kids in this district now. I've got one at Nagel, one at Summit, and one coming up. But I want to share an experience I had with you guys a couple weeks ago, and actually, one of the teachers is in the classroom. I got invited by Natasha Adams to attend a class at Nagel where the kids were drawing, redrawing parking lots, and they were, if you guys could have been in this classroom and seen what these kids did, it would have blown your mind. They were worried about how straight the lines were. There were professionals from our community, and they're working with our kids, taking their education to the next level. Without this bond levy, you guys, we don't continue to have those environments. There are, there have been many studies, and I will rebut the fact that none of them have been used in this study, because it's not true. A lot of what's been, what has taken place over the last 20 years is in what this Board has put together for us. There are times when you can walk into Summit or Anderson High School, and the rooms are 97 degrees. How much learning do you think's going on in those classrooms? Anybody?
Well, I used to teach for Cincinnati Public.
Yeah.
I can tell you that our rooms were like 102, and there was learning occurring.
I highly doubt it was occurring at its highest level.
Well, my school...
Okay, okay. Hey, no, this is...
So my point is that we are not, we are not in a position to rebuild six elementaries, two high schools, and a middle school. And yes, we have to change directions in parking lots, because at one point, a fire alarm went off at Nagel Middle School, and the emergency crews could not get to our children. Do you know why? Because the functionality of that driveway and state in Nagel doesn't work. I'm a real estate agent in Anderson. My partner is Kay Edwards, she's here with us tonight. When we looked at the hard and fast numbers of real estate in Anderson Township, while many of our clients outside of this community lost 12, 15, in some cases, 20 percent of their property value, on average, Anderson was up over 3 percent. So I'm curious, I under, there are parts of Anderson who took hits harder than others, but on average, you guys, we are in this position because of our school district, and our kids need this. Do you know that, I've got a friend, many of you may know Angie Zoglio. Do you know her father's never, ever been able to attend a musical, a basketball game, and anything at Summit Elementary, because there's no way for him to get to the gym? And I hope and pray that we're never in the position that the families of Sandy Hook were several months ago. When you walk, all of our doors, you beep a button and you're let in, but you think the crazy man with the gun's going to go check in at the office? He's not. And I hope it's not my kid's class he makes it to first. So please, let me put something in perspective, as I was talking to people about this today to get perspective, so my opinions aren't one-sided. I talked to one family who lives on the lower end of Anderson from a housing value standpoint, and she said to me, "You know what, LeAnn? For people who have a $200,000 house, we're talking about $100 a year. For my family of five and for her family of five, that's two trips to BW3s. Where are we really arguing over that amount of money? Because this is the future of our kids, this is the future of our school district, and I think we need to take this very seriously." Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm not here so much about the bond issue as the fact that there is a far larger looming cost to the Forrest Hill School District that has no field testing, no cost projection analysis that's been done on it. And so if you think this bond issue has a big price tag, and you're not comfortable with it, or you're not sure that you accept what they're saying about it, I suggest you look into the fact that everybody wants to attest to, "We have a phenomenal public school district." I don't argue that. But do you realize that two years ago, the State of Ohio gave away local control of education? How long do you think you maintain this, when a national organization, a trade organization in D.C. determines whether the local control of 12 years, whether your child gets a high school diploma conferred? So this is an absolute sham, common core standards. There is no field testing done on it. This may seem like a big deal, this bond issue. We're talking about fundamental change to the curriculum of every child across the country, except in the smart states who have opted out. Okay? This was a bait and switch. This is what race to the top was all about. Those monies are gone. The appropriated money of 120 million from three years ago, when it was put into the legislature, that's gone. How is Forrest Hill is going to implement this? Buy all-new textbooks, millions of dollars in industrial technology, because you can't do the assessment except on Microsoft Assessment software and hardware. Funny, because Gates, everything you type in, every organization, from Park all the way back to Achieve, type in Achieve and Gates, and just see how much, how many millions they gave them. Bill Gates has bought the education system of the entire country. Your agenda is his agenda now. Okay? You have nothing to say. You got a problem with the science curriculum? That's going to be coming, because I can guarantee you, the next bait and switch is coming. Because the logic doesn't carry. If we have to have the ELA in math so bad, so that we can be globally competitive, why don't we need the science and the history? That doesn't make sense. So what's going to happen is you're going to be in a red place again, and they're going to say, "Well, hey, well, you know what? We'll give you $500 million to get, to go with the science and the history now." And we'll be right back where we were, we'll take that, because we're desperate for funding. You people should be concerned, as all get out, that you've lost control of your kids. And you guys should be absolutely infuriated. The condescending attitude coming out of the ODE, when I call up there and they say, "No, you are being lied to by your local school district." It is not mandated by the State of Ohio. We are a local-controlled state. Well, excuse me, then, why am I being told that by my Forrest Hill School District? Their Board is telling you that it's in print in our newspaper. I don't know, ma'am, because that's not true. I said, "Okay, then why am I doing this? Why, it's a local property text. Can you tell me that you have to do this? Charge me accordingly." Because the national assessment has to be passed. So at the 12-year mark, after you guys, the educating experts, have said, "This child is qualified to graduate." Not even graduate, graduate with honors. No, not unless Park, the national assessment determines that they are. Then what do you tell the parents? It's, it is insidious, it's systemic. We do not have local control. For all intent and purposes, this is a farce. Okay? You guys are implementing whatever ODE tells you to do, and you're assessed based on whatever they've told you to do. You should be infuriated that you've lost local control, and you guys should be absolutely infuriated, you have nowhere to go to ask questions.
Hello, I'm Lou Batch, and believe it or not, I was working on my taxes right before I came over here, so I hope you don't mind if I work off some notes I had written up. I'm an architect. My wife and I have two kids in the district. We have some good neighbors, and I think one of the smartest decisions we made was to move into this district about 10 years ago. As someone in the community, I was asked to give some input as the facilities plan was developed by the district. So I've had a chance to tour the buildings, I've studied the proposals of the facilities plan, and I've looked at the cost estimates, which were prepared by an outside consultant. And I think everyone agrees we need to do something, and that budgets are an issue. And I also think that the district has done a good job listening to what people in the district have had to say over the years, and they've put together a good facilities plan, and I support that. I think we need air conditioning and internet in all the classrooms. We need to make our schools barrier-free for people on, not just on wheelchairs, but on crutches as well. And that's not just students, it's for teachers, for people visiting the buildings. The district's done a good job implementing some of those things, and it's time to complete that work. We need to make our buildings safer and more secure. That's a discussion that's been going on since long before Sandy Hook, and basically that means going a step beyond the secured doors to the building and creating secure entry lobbies. And there's other things as well with that. And finally, it's time to replace Wilson and get rid of the modular classrooms throughout the district. And I say that as somebody who is a Maddox, Nagel, Anderson father. I've been in the other buildings in the district, and the issue with Wilson is that it's a piecemeal design, and it's more difficult and costly to renovate that building than it is to replace it. You know, I'd just like to address one thing, and that's as somebody who was participating in the Steering Committee. We did consider the plans and the options that were discussed in 2010, and I think it's important to note when we're talking about those, that all those plans required downsizing the district to six or seven buildings, and only one or two of those buildings would have been brand new. Okay? Wilson has always been one of the buildings that would have been replaced in that scenario. Construction costs for those plans in 2010 were higher than the current plan, and to save the money, the district would have had to go to one high school and four central elementary schools, then reduce the number of teachers and other staff once the school opened to offset the cost. So, you know, as somebody who was in the meetings back in 2010, went to the community meetings, I wasn't on that facilities committee, I think the reaction from the community was pretty clear to the one high school plan, and I think that's why this plan presents a way to move forward for the future. So to do that, we have to commit to this plan, and I think one of the things that I really got out of my work, my participation in the Steering Committee, was that... steering committee, was that the bond is really the right way to do this. It's just like, if you were planning a major addition or major renovation on your house, you would take out a loan to pay for it. You wouldn't try to save up the money and wait till you had enough money to do it. It's important to do it with a bond, because that allows the work to be finished in a reasonable amount of time. Okay? So, and as somebody else said, I mean, that does come with a cost, but it's less than $2 a week for the average family. So I, I think we all have a choice, and, and I urge everybody to vote, and I hope that you'll support the bond. Thanks.
My name's Forrest Heiss, I'm a lifelong resident of Anderson Township, past board member for many years, and graduate of Anderson High School, the new Anderson High School that was built 50 years ago. With all due respect to my friend Pete, he knows what value he's got from his, the education his kid's got. He knows how good Anderson High School is. He knows, but he, and he's also been in that school, and he knows the needs of that school. This is a great time. I, the board many years ago set up a permanent improvement fund, and that was the cure-all. We were going to share of all the problems, because seven or eight years that I was on the board, we always had this list of projects to do, but we never had any money to do them. So we just allocated interest and taxes from board sold property into this permanent improvement fund. And as, you know, as short as six years ago, we got $1.265 million to spend on schools, on permanent improvements, those major projects. Not maintenance, it's not out sweeping the floors, it's doing the big projects, the chillers, the roofs. I went on the board, I always walked and didn't look at the kids, I'm looking at the roofs and where the leaks are and all that. And boilers, and those things are big bucks, big bucks. We've always talked about air conditioning, and yeah, I grew up in a house that wasn't air-conditioning, I went to a school that wasn't air-conditioned. I do have air conditioning now. I didn't go to school in a trailer. I submit, none of you went to school in a trailer. And, but we say, hey, we get trailers, that solves all the problems. It doesn't. The educational environment for our kids is paramount. Why should the board do it now? I agree with Pete, we just came to you for a very small levy, the smallest levy in the Hamblin County in years, in our district in years. But it didn't handle, 86% of our budget goes to operations, to salaries, to benefits, all those. You got 14, 15% goes to transportation and improvements and all that. The board on its own was dying last year, the year before. That 100 million, what, 1,265,000 we got six years ago? We got $3,700 last year in interest to put in the permanent improvement fund. A 99.4% drop. What do we spend? When I went off the board in '08, '09, we spent $1.8 million on permanent improvement. We spent $100,000 last year, $55,000. Yeah, you defer, you defer, you defer, defer. And then what happens? You fall off the cliff. We built eight schools between 1957 and, 59 and 76. Those are the eight remaining schools, not Kelly-Nagel. That every, makes the average age of our school 40 years. You know, I live in a 40-year-old house, I know what it, you know, a lot of us live in 50-year-old houses more. Structurally, they're sound, but they take more money in improvements and maintenance than a new house does. So where do we get it? You go to a levy now, I hate tax issues, but I want value for what I do pass. And I think we get value here for a very low amount, you could put that bond out at a low interest rate, you have builders and contractors who are looking for work, you can get a good price on that, and you're able to deal with it. As Pete said, we've talked about improvements for 20-plus years. They did incorporate Wilson. Wilson couldn't be, the rehab was much more than, than the benefit of the cost of removing it. You're gonna be able to build Wilson, the new Wilson behind it, you won't have to rent more trailers or put them in a different school, they can continue to go to school there, and you can deal with the program. When it gets 97 degrees, what do people do? They open the door! Well, given the recent events, we don't want doors open in our schools. You go in, you know, and schools were built to be inviting, come in, walk in any door. That's not the way society is now. The theme of our levy will be protect, protect our kids, meaning what they need to have to get the infrastructure, protect the schools. We have a great reputation here. Most of us don't know what it is until we leave, then we take a look and say, what good situation we do we have here? And the last thing is protect our investment. I want to protect the value of Pete's house. I want to be able to do that. You want to be able to have that and pass the levy? You go and move next door to, now, not casting stones, but City of Cincinnati passed quadruple million-dollar one, they're tearing down schools newer than our schools. And I would say their values went down more than ours. So what do you have? We could put our kids in a tent. I'm sure of that. With the tent, the kids we have and the teachers we have, they'll get some education. But the infrastructure that we need for technology and all that, we need to get that in now, and we, there's never a good time to put a levy on. Every, the state is set up every three to four years, I like this local control thing. You know, we're fighting, we have a good thing going on Forest Hills, we want to do, keep that going. So you have a levy on there, very small, and you get a chance to go in and deal with major problems. And the, the studies show that our buildings, the infrastructure, the structure of the buildings are good, except for Wilson, they can be repaired, and the life of those are extended. And the other thing that's been done for Pete is that it gives you one more year on your operating levy, rather than coming back in three, it's gonna go out to four. Those are all good ideas.
I've always wanted to say this, this time's up.
Thank you.
We'll talk about that at home. Next up, our district updates from the superintendent, our district technology update, Dr. Jackson?
Yes, I'd like to introduce Christine McCormick, who is going to share a little bit regarding our technology. This topic was mentioned at our last work session a month or so ago, and so Christine is gonna share a little bit for the board and the audience.
Okay. Carrie's gonna help me out here in a second. But as stated, I'm Christine McCormick, I'm the director of technology here. I'm gonna talk to you briefly about technology, what's happening at Forest Hills. We're gonna spend the majority of the time on Power Up. And Power Up is Forest Hills Bring Your Own Technology Initiative. So where are we now? At Nagel, 67% of students are bringing in their own device. Currently, they're one-to-one by being supplemented with district devices to offset personally-owned devices. They have an instructional technologist three times a week. And they're living in the digital world all day, every day. At Anderson and Turpin, on average, 38% of the students are bringing in their own devices. They're living in two worlds, especially the teachers. Some students have the technology and some don't. It's a little difficult for them to instruct and to figure out how they're going to go about every lesson every day. And it's difficult to shift the instructional paradigms based on that. They also share one instructional technologist with six other buildings. So what have we learned from this experience? Well, first of all, if you look at that, and you can't see it very well, but teachers have a lot on their plate. Based on Forest Hills initiatives, those initiatives are from 2009 up to 2014, which are yet to come. However, when you look at this, and I, I just want everybody to understand, as you go through any initiative, it takes time, patience, persistence, support, and resources to make it successful. What we also know is students won't bring in a device if the teachers don't use them. However, teachers won't leverage technology in the classroom if students don't have access to a device. So which came first, the chicken or the egg? However, the importance of moving forward. I have a little analogy to illustrate this point. Would you want to have an operation in this style of operating room? Or would you want a progressive operating room? With the latest tools, the latest technology, and a highly-qualified physician? We know what we do for our health, but what will we do for our students? We need to continue giving parents reasons to make Forest Hills their school of choice. Continued excellence includes technology. Here are our current plans to help make this dream a reality. Visioning. We're spending time on a district vision, and in that, curriculum and technology are working cooperatively to re-envision learning at Forest Hills. We have a student-led help desk that we're gonna be starting, it's already begun at Nagel. Next year, we'll also be implementing it at Anderson and Turpin High Schools. We're creating new tech, new opportunities for professional development, leveraging digital technologies. We have a comprehensive professional development for staff over the summer. We're infusing technology in the Common Core for teachers to help them. We're saturating grades nine and 10 with devices to move forward, or, excuse me, more, move towards a one-to-one environment. And we're working with the foundation to bridge the equity gap. In addition, we've had some issues with iPads, Chromebooks, other devices not working as well with some district resources. So we're gonna be moving to a virtual desktop to help eliminate that problem. No, we haven't arrived, but we are on our way. So if the board has any questions, I'd be happy to answer any of those with regards to technology.
Yes.
Christine, why do you think that kids aren't using them as much in the high school? Is it because of the effect? If they start in Nagel, it seems like they will use them more in the high school.
Sure.
So is it because we're coming in, like for Nate, who's in 10th grade, he wasn't in Nagel when we started it, so...
I definitely think the progression from Nagel to the high school, it's been difficult, number one. Again, we go back to, right now, kids are using it all day, every day. At the high school, one of the things to remember, at Nagel, there was comprehensive professional development, we didn't have a lot of initiatives going on at that time. As we've transitioned to the high school, we've had Common Core that we're trying to implement, 40 developmental assets, RTI, Power Up, all at the same time. We didn't have that happening at Nagel. And in addition, we went from doing just two grade levels to four. So it, it's going to take time. And by having, some kids having it and some kids not having it, and having one person trying to professionally develop the eight buildings, it's just gonna take longer, because our resources are limited.
So you think that 38% will go up as the Nagel can move up?
Absolutely.
As we have more professional development in the high schools?
No question.
Okay.
No question.
What, you talked about professional development over the summer. Is it voluntary, is it mandatory? And how do you handle?
No, it's voluntary.
What teachers get it?
Well, the district can't afford to pay for everybody.
Right.
Obviously.
So what's the plan?
One of the things we do, a carrot that we do offer, is they can earn college credit that can help with their LPDC requirements. So they are offered that. And we're, we're trying to compel them with, you know, I know high school teachers don't want those students coming into their classroom and not know what to do with them. It's difficult living in those two worlds, but as the ninth-grade teachers know, you know what, we're gonna go ahead and supplement to make sure you're almost in a one-to-one environment as close as possible. They're gonna be more compelled, I believe, to come to professional development, to help learn, to live in a different kind of world. Any other questions?
Yeah. So as I understand it, we've made really great progress at Nagel.
Correct.
One-to-one, kids are used to using their devices. They get to high school, and you got freshmen in with juniors and seniors.
Correct.
Who haven't yet been through the program.
Correct.
And with teachers who've got a combination of all four grades. So are we losing with the freshmen and sophomores some of what they gained at Nagel?
I'd say there is a portion of loss, absolutely. But I also know, and I, I speak from personal experience with my daughter, because she went through Nagel and she's come to the high school, the teachers aren't using it in the same way. Some of them are, some of them aren't, more, more not than so. But she has learned differently. I mean, the, her approach to every day, her organizational methods, how she takes notes, how she calls information and vets information, is leveraging that technology, and that hasn't changed. She's, she takes her computer every single day. My son's a junior, he doesn't. You know? He's my son, and that's a little bit embarrassing, but it, it happened. And I admitted it on TV.
So what do we need to do? And I, I heard everything you just said. What do we need to do to get this to the next level of high school?
Well, in my opinion, we need time to spend with them. We need to have time that the teachers can actually spend time working on that. By infusing it in the Common Core, which curriculum and technology have been working closely to try to do that, that's going to change things. This year, it was essentially just Common Core. But we've spent a lot of time, as of late, just thinking, you know, how, how are we gonna change that? Because we know we can't do each thing as a disparate item. We have to infuse them together to make any kind of progress. So we're moving, moving towards that. So the best thing I can say is, you know, any resources that we can find, we'd like to have. The student framework is part of the support structure that will help. What that does is actually, the students will be helping to do low-level break-fix support. In addition, they're going to be knowledgeable on basic tool usage, so they can go in and help a class. For instance, if a class is instructing on Google Docs and they need help, they don't know it very well. A student can come in and help facilitate that. They can be walking around helping students to the teacher, the onus isn't on the teacher. So essentially, the goal is to have six to eight students every period doing that, so you have that many more experts. So it should exponentially grow, kind of a groundswell from underneath is the hope. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're gonna take the next item, or no, sorry, next up is board discussion.
Based on the discussion we've had over facilities, I thought it would be appropriate to take a few minutes and review just where we are and make sure that we're all grounded on the same background information, the same facts. Just a review, and this has come up from a couple of our speakers this evening, from 2004 to 2013, Forest Hills has had four committees that looked at the district facilities. In addition, the superintendent presented a master plan in 2007. So we had the 2004 superintendent committee, 2006 superintendent committee, 2007 superintendent master plan, 2010 board committee, and a 2012 superintendent committee. Back in 2004, that was a 35-member committee that met from May of 2004 through December. Although this was set up as a superintendent committee, the chairman was a member of the board. During this period of time, the OSFC analysis was completed. I think that's significant, because that was an independent third-party that did a thorough analysis of the entire school district facilities, which fortunately, we didn't have to pay for. The, this committee used, was able to use that information, because the report was received from the state in 2005. 2004, the committee did not make any specific recommendations. In the summary document written by John Patswald dated January 2005, options for short-term, midterm, and long-term were presented. The short-term, which is the one that's relevant, had five options, redistricting, installing modulators, is Forest still here? That's trailers. Increase class size, construct small additions, and reclaim unutilized space. These had cost estimates that ranged anywhere from $61 million to $70 million. The committee did not make a specific recommendation to the Board of Education, but the board did, and the board didn't act on any of these broad recommendations, except they added the modulators to Wilson, because they needed the space at the time. Moving on to 2006, that was a 14-member superintendent committee that was established by John Patswald to address Phase Two of the 2004 committee. The purpose was to focus on the potential of a replacement for Wilson, multiple elementary school additions or upgrades, and a pre-K facility. The first charge of the committee was dated April 6, 2006. 18 options were prepared on September 8, 2006. A recommendation referred to as Option A was prepared on, was proposed on November 8. It listed 10 items that included a new pre-K building, a new Wilson, renovations to the elementary schools, and renovations to Anderson and Turpin. The cost varied for this, but it ranged somewhere in the $70 million range. A summary date, a statement dated November 29 included the new Wilson or pre-K building, as well as some upgrades to the elementaries and high schools. In August of 2007, the superintendent presented a facilities master plan to the Board of Education, and the superintendent master plan did not recommend any configuration changes. The plan recommended improvements to existing buildings, and this was based on the 2004 and 2006 committee results. The cost in 2008 dollars was around $56 million. Moving on to 2010, in Sept, the meeting we had on September 14th in 2009 was a special board meeting, and the Board of Education president appointed a committee to review facilities. The committee was composed of approximately 12 members, and the first meeting was on March of 2010. The data support some of the recommendations that were presented to the District Financial Review Committee. It was presented to the Financial Review Committee, but the committee stated they couldn't verify or certify... verify or certify the estimates based on the supporting data. The initial recommendations presented to individual members had just two options, and both of them had one high school, and we demanded that it, that an option with two high schools be added in. The four recommendations were maintain the existing configuration. That was going to be a cost of four to six mil operating levy, a 1.6 mil bond issue, and a one mil permanent improvement levy. Option two is maintain two high schools, one middle school, one elementary, and additions to three, and close two elementaries. The cost for that was two to five mils, plus a six mil bond issue. Estimated capital cost, $133 million. A third option was close one high school and raise the other, build a new high school, one middle school, convert a building into an intermediate school, and build one new elementary school. The estimated capital cost was $115 million. The fourth one was close one high school and raise the other, build a new high school, one middle school, one elementary school, renovate three elementary schools. The cost for that was one to three mil operating levy and a nine mil bond issue. Estimated capital cost, $189 million. Something that's important to understand is, those were extremely optimistic numbers that were put into those estimates. Looking back, an analysis that was done after the fact, I don't know of anybody who believes we could have actually accomplished everything when it was all said and done, to really accomplish what was proposed in those estimates, in those proposals with the estimated amount of money. So I think it was wildly optimistic. That brings us up to 2012, the Superintendent Steering Committee. Shortly after we approved the strategic plan, Dr. Jackson put together the steering team to meet Goal Three of our strategic plan. And hopefully, people are familiar with that. The key assumption is, we'd maintain our current building organization, maintain neighborhood schools, enrollment would vary slightly each year, but no major change in student enrollment for the foreseeable future. Yes, we've gone up 100 or 200 and down 100 or 200, but in general, we're basically flat. Facility plans must meet needs, that's key, not wants. And we also have to plan for the long term. When you're looking at enrollment, we have to be ready next year for the kids that are here. If we think long-term, the enrollment's going to go down, you can't build for that because what are you going to do with the kids that we have currently? The point of all this is, all of these programs that we've looked at, everything that's gone into the current proposal is, in fact, based on the proposals that we've looked at in the past, and they are consistent. One of the consistent things has always been replace Wilson. This does not lock us into any configuration in the future, but it does keep us good for, you know, you can ask, I'm not an architect, but, you know, I believe it'd be at least 10 years, we'd be good for that. And the projections in enrollment indicate that we're looking at a somewhat stable enrollment, depending on what happens with the education model in Ohio. Vouchers could change that, a lot of things could change that. But, and quite frankly, would mean enrollment would probably go up in Forest Hills, but that's a whole nother discussion. The point of this is, this is the most cost-effective proposal we've seen in 10 years. And I say "we," I'm looking at Rick, because I think Rick and I are the two that have actually been through all the last, the 10 years of the various committees that we've had. I've heard some things that are inconsistent, but those are the facts, and that's all based on documents that are, they're public documents. I'm looking for something that's fiscally responsible. I'm looking for something that's got the minimal amount of government intervention, and quite frankly, as much free market as you can get into this. But that's, that's the summary of where we are and what got us to here today. We can choose to do nothing, but it's time to take some action, and we've got a responsibility to take care of the buildings in our school district. On behalf of the community, that's, we represent them. And at some point, if you don't maintain things, it costs more, you pay me now or pay me more later. And that's kind of where we are. In the past, we've heard about projections of combining schools. For example, at one of these meetings, there was a projection of saving $3 million when we consolidated Nagel. Well, that actually wasn't accurate. It was a projection of saving $3 million. And the reality of the situation was, the year we opened Nagel, I don't have these to pass out, but I've got them for the board, that represented the single highest increase in expenses for our district that I could find data for. That's going back about 20 years. So the panacea of consolidation is not exactly what it might be cracked up to be. We've talked about the one high school situation. I think that decision's been made. We've, that's behind us at this point. For a number of reasons. As it was pointed out by a couple of the speakers, the community basically won't support it by a broad margin. There's the Columbine effect. If we were to build one mega high school here, that puts us over 2,500 students in one building, and that's when the education experts, which I'm not one of, but I've seen presentations on this, where kids start to fall through the cracks when you're in a mega high school. And plus, you're looking at a price tag that exceeds $200 million. If you look at what Mason has done, what they've invested in their buildings is in that range or greater. Princeton, their price tag was around $125 million, and they're half our size, and that was only in, on the high school end. So you've got to peel back the onion a little bit and start looking at the facts when you really think about what we're doing here. We've been paralyzed for 10 years, and it's finally time to move forward and take a step that won't really lock us in. I heard some discussion about how our education stature in the state has been declining, and nothing could be farther from the truth. We're now, we were part of the Elite Eight, and I understand, we're now part of the Elite Seven, out of the 614 school districts in the state of Ohio that have kept the state's top academic ranking for the past 11 years. Not our neighbors, not Wyoming, not many other well-known school districts in the state of Ohio, but Forest Hills is one of those. People come to Forest Hills to see how we do it, and we do it at a lower cost per student than most of those other school districts. So the thought that Forest Hills is, is not, is declining in our education stature in the state is flat out not true. There are a lot of other things, like, for example, the Knowledge Works study that showed Forest Hills as a benchmark school in the state of Ohio when it came to funding. We were a benchmark school in three out of the five measures. So there are a lot of other reasons that things are going right here. And like I said, what I was looking for is something that was fiscally responsible, and I believe that this is the plan to move forward. If anybody else wants to add to that or have questions, I've got a summary that I can share with you.
It should be noted that Randy was not at our January meeting when we did. He's been building up for two months for this, so...
If anybody has anything, I realize that was long, but I thought it was important to get on the record.
I appreciate kind of walking us down, you know, the timeline and kind of reviewing the facilities. I mean, I've only been here, it's my eighth year, so I wasn't here for the first one. But I think that's important for people to know what was, you know, explored over the years. And Dallas's steering committee, you know, this time around, used all of that information. They reviewed it, they looked at what was important, and I think people need to remember that. It wasn't all just thrown in a garbage can and ignored, so thanks for that kind of recap.
I couldn't possibly add to it in a substantive way, and I would be already saying, well done, and I appreciate the perspective. I can tell you, it's really as simple right now as doing nothing, going with a plan that changes the building configuration and spending upwards of $150 to $200 million, something I think that would be financially irresponsible and frankly, would never be approved, so is irrelevant in any event. Or going forward with the needs-based plan that Dr. Jackson has presented numerous times, that Rick has talked about, and you so well just summarized for us, saying, to me, it's an easy decision. We'll see what our voters think. I hope the voters will support the schools. These are your schools, they're not our schools. They're the taxpayers' schools. We want to help you protect your investment in the district. I hope they'll let us do it. Thank you, Randy.
I had one thing, I think, since we're talking about, you know, some of the financial pieces, I think we might have said it here before, but, you know, when you look at, you know, the four counties, you know, and we talk about passing an operating levy of 3.9 mils in March of 2012. School districts really have two funds, one operating and one facilities, so a bond or permanent improvement. And we have 1.69 is our debt. So that's what we, as taxpayers, are paying on, which is really the Nagel Middle School, Turpin Auditorium, and some things like that that occurred in the late 90s. And that, from a debt standpoint, or a facility standpoint, ranks us 44th out of 49 school districts. So as 49 communities, we're 44th lowest in the support of facilities. And that's a number that is comparable to size of all those districts, because Milage is that. Milage equalizes that. So the 1.69 mils puts us 44th with an average of in the fives. So what does that mean? That means that currently, the average school district has five-plus facility mils on their books. And that is, what does it take to maintain? And maintain has been used loosely sometimes, or misunderstood. Maintain means when windows need to be, are broken, needs to be repaired, that's a repair, it's not a maintenance. When we're talking about replacing windows, replacing doors, replacing a roof that needs to be replaced, those are huge capital projects that operating budgets don't have money for, period. They're not there. We have to, what Mr. Heiss Senior had said earlier, is creatively, the board created a permanent improvement fund, a non-tax generating permanent improvement fund. What does that mean? That tax dollars that were earmarked for operating were moved to a permanent improvement fund. Interest earnings. So basically, the interest that we earned in our operating budget, supposed to be used for operating dollars for operating the day-to-day, was moved to a permanent improvement fund. From there, we have spent 20, over $21 million of operating dollars to maintain our facilities. What does that mean? That means that we've actually come back to our voters earlier because we've done that. We've actually had to, you know, maintain our facilities, and we have, as we've seen the last two or three years, with no interest earnings, we've deferred these necessary capital projects. Ray Johnson, our Director of Business Operations, has an annual plan of what we need to do in all of our buildings. We obviously want to replace a roof before it goes off of warranty. We want to replace, with a million square feet under roof, you can't just wake up one day and say, let's replace, you know, all the roofs. We actually do it very methodically and do all the needs. We have our, all these critical areas looked at every year and prioritized. So that's the facility plan that we have from a day-to-day standpoint. But back to my original point is that as a community, we are supporting facilities, 44th lowest out of 49. This issue that we're talking about, you know, still puts us in the mid-30s. And obviously, still need to continue to look at facilities, it's an ongoing issue. But I think we have an obligation to our taxpayers to maintain our facilities.
Thank you.
You're looking at me?
I'm just running around. Yeah, I know, you're good.
I spoke at length in January, and the only thing I want to say about what Randy said tonight is, I, and this is one of the things I've talked about in January, is I wish we had had, as a board, a more meaningful discussion. I think Randy bringing all this up tonight is great, and I just wish we had talked more among ourselves. That's all.
Yeah, and I'm, I mean, from my perspective, we've, you know, looking back, we've had 40 years of two bonds to build two new schools, I mean, Turpin and then Nagel. And to get to a point now where we've not done it, I mean, there's been a lot of plans, there's been plans before that going back into the 80s about doing things. And, you know, I like the idea that we're now putting it out to you. You get to decide. We haven't been able to do that. We have people that say, you know, well, give us something to vote on, or even to vote down, but give us something. You know, we want to hear from the community. So that's where we are. It's, we're putting it in your hands. So, thanks.
We hear it over and over, the number one reason people give us they move to this community is the schools. And I feel like we have got an absolute responsibility to take care of them. The other thing that we haven't talked about a lot, and there's a reason we don't talk about it too much publicly, is the whole safety and security issue. We have got a responsibility to act in that area. But, thank you.
All right. Moving on to student services. We're going to take the agenda items from 9.1 to 10.8 as a consent agenda, so we'll start with Betsy.
Student Services has the two overnight field trips being requested by Anderson High School Administration. These are both after-the-fact trips due to reaching their competition and championship levels since the last board meeting. The 9.1 is, occurred just this past weekend in Columbus, Ohio. 9.2 occurred two weekends ago in Hilliard, Ohio. The number of students, specific dates, cost, and any additional information is included in these items, and it is recommended the board approve the trips by Anderson High School, DECA Marketing Club, and the gymnastics team.
Thank you. Connie?
We have a number of courses of study that have been reviewed by the board last month and this month, and some new AP courses. So we're asking that the board approve these courses of study and textbooks that are being recommended this evening.
All the way through. Can I get a motion?
I move that we approve the items 9, listed in 9.1 through 10.8.
Eight.
Of the agenda.
Second.
Ms. Depper.
Mr. Frumman.
Yes.
Mrs. Hubner.
Yes.
Mrs. Bissinger.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Dr. Heiss.
Yes. Next up is Technology, 11.1. Christine?
Yes, Ms. Anderson, that the board approve the Internet Services contract between HCCA and Forest Hills for the period of three years. And this is also an upgrade of our internet connection to accommodate for park testing. So I ask for the board an emotion to approve contract.
I move that we approve the HCCA Internet Service Contract for the period of July close 2013 through June 3, 2016.
Second.
Ms. Depper.
Mr. Frumman.
Yes.
Mrs. Hubner.
Yes.
Mrs. Bissinger.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Dr. Heiss.
Yes. Item 12, Human Resources Report. Tammy?
Item A, Retirement. This evening, we had the great privilege to honor Pat Grove, unfortunately for us, good for Pat Grove. She is going to be retiring at the end of this school year after 35 years, social studies at Nagel. So very definitely with regret, we'll be asking the board to approve that. Item B, Catherine Hurley, Language Arts Teacher, resignation. Item C, we have a leave of absence. Item D, Special Services Appointment, and these are part-time. I'm going to just let you take a look at those on page one. Goes on to page two. We have some curriculum items. We also have some athletic items and work beyond the contract. On page three, you'll also see additional support. Item E, these are our appointments of coaches and advisors. Again, it goes from page three to page four. And item F, Substitute Personnel. We continue to look for substitute personnel for this school year. Since the board meeting of February 25, staffing in the district has not changed, and the staffing level remains at 769.17 FTE. The superintendent recommends that the board approve the HR report as presented.
Second.
Ms. Depper.
Mrs. Hubner.
Yes.
Mr. Frumman.
Yes.
Mrs. Bissinger.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Dr. Heiss.
Yes. Next up, the Treasury Report, District Insurance.
Yes. Item 13.1, the district's current property liability, Arizona emissions and fleet Obviously, I don't remember, two years ago, we had a 20, almost a 25% decrease through a lot of competitive forces, and obviously, the market's beginning to harden a little bit with some of the natural disasters that we've faced, as well as our claims are catching up as well. But, looking at a 12-year average of 251,000, we're still about 5% lower than a 12-year average, and five of the last 12 years have actually had a decrease from the year prior. As I said, we competitively bid this every year, got a great partner in Berry Insurance Group working with us. And I guess the other piece is that we've also added some significant coverages along the way that are additional, such as fiduciary and cyber, you know, liability coverage. So, we're still actually lower than the premium we were paying in 2007, 2008 for what amounts to better coverage. So, it's recommended the board approve the insurance carriers per the attached premium summary through the Berry Insurance Group for the period of April 1, 2013, to April 1, 2014.
Rick, I got a question for you. The workers' comp insurance is for the stopgap?
This is not correct. No, this is not.
The premium here, we do have a stop loss on the new.
On our self-insurance workers' comp, this is not that. This is not that. This is, for our employees, that's what this is, in a different environment. And the workers' comp for self-insurance is a different plan altogether. That's a December through December, and we're actually going to get on this same cycle in the future, but it's a different program.
Thanks.
Now, is this something, too, for the Swoosh program? Is this something that is a potential?
Maybe. I mean, we're, there's several options, and this will be one of them. The, you know, same philosophy applies, as you get larger groups together, rates change. I think the, what we found with Swoosh, I think wellness was a big deal, and I think wellness in this world is, is how safe are our facilities? And I think we, you know, we're on a short list when it comes to, not only, as Mr. Fruman was mentioning, our workers' comp claims, but how, you know, we maintain our facilities, and that's really what keeps those costs down. I mean, insurances are necessary, and obviously, they continue to change as the exposures change. And, but yes, I think this is, we've already mentioned, this is a possibility, you know, for our consortium.
Thanks. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Deffer.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Bissinger.
Yes.
Mr. Fruman.
Yes.
Mrs. Hubner.
Yes.
Dr. Heiss.
Yes.
Now, the Treasurers' Report.
Yeah, item 13.2. And, item A, we have the donations for the month of February, so $32,000, a little over $32,000, large donation from the Forest Hills Foundation for Education, funding really two critical programs, our 24/7 learning program, as well as our PowerUp Equity Program, significant donations to both of those. Item B, we have our Statement of Board Accounts, and we have one fund, it's a negative balance at month-end. We do have requests outstanding, as well as we have money to cover it in our general fund, which are the two criteria, allowing that negative balance. And item C, we have a summary of general fund receipts, about a little shot of 85% of our projected revenue's been received. The only two items really left there is, obviously, our, every other week, State Foundation, but we have a TIF payment that's still coming due. Otherwise, we're on target with our revenue projections. And item D and E, we have our expenditures by function and object. The, you know, 63.13% of our appropriations have been spent at month-end. This is a little bit, about 1.29%, higher than a three-year average, but something we're continuing to watch. We, this time of year, we start to wrap up, you know, our spending plan for the year, and so those numbers will get, will get in line when it comes to, last year at this time, we'll be able to show you the numbers in the next two months. I think we'll be really close to what our ending numbers are going to be. And item F, we have our monthly bank reconciliation. Item G, our purchase of investments. And item H, our amendments to the appropriations. We have three items with a, an increase, our permanent improvement funds being, appropriations increased to spend the money for the summer's projects that were brought to the board last month. And item I, we have the recommendations for our summer school cashier. And item J is a request to close the school activity account and transfer the account balance, listed in item J. It's recommended the board approve the Treasurers' Report as presented.
Second.
Ms. Deffer.
Mrs. Bissinger.
Yes.
Mr. Fruman.
Yes.
Mrs. Hubner.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Dr. Heiss.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Reports to the Board of Education, first, the Forest Hills Foundation Report.
The Board of Forest Hills Foundation for Education, that just this last Wednesday, March 13, here in the Judd Room, discussed the work being done by Jim Yonker and his company, they've been working with the foundation on capital campaign and other fundraising activities. He's in the midst of the review of the status and his continued plans and efforts. There was a core team leader meeting of the foundation on February 26. The foundation has changed its structure a little bit, moving to a team-based approach. It seems to be much more functional, it seemed to get more done. The team leaders met on February 26, and then we had reports of each of the teams. One of them is the Community Outreach Team, they reported on what they're trying to do to reach their constituents. We heard from the team that is principally pursuing the fundraising activities, and they're using various software on their tools and their fundraising efforts. We heard from the Program Initiative Team, and they're working on the programs that were just reviewed in the presentation by Christine, how the foundation is actually following up to make sure those programs are doing what they funded them to do, and see if additional funding or some modification of funding is necessary. Discussion from the Communications Team and what they're doing to maintain a consistent logo and color scheme. There's some new marketing materials coming out, a new newsletter that maybe went out this week, or coming out later this week, tomorrow. So, there was discussion of that. We heard that the Employee Giving Campaign was really wonderfully successful, 56% of the employees, all employees, each schools and staff, 56% participated in the program. So, thank you very much, everybody. Those on the board, if you haven't heard from anybody on the foundation, I'll bet you do.
The main motivation?
They're here now. Talked about the events, the Day for Today's Woman was completed, and apparently was a wonderful success. The Alumni Basketball Game took place, five overtimes. The only way they were finally able to finish the game was they forced the oldest players to play, and apparently, that did it. And the next event that's coming up is the Forest Hills 5K on May 18, and there's plenty of time to register, so please do.
Thank you. Next up, the Legislative Liaison Report.
Right now, the hot issue is House Bill 59. The House Primary and Secretary of Education Finance Subcommittee has heard a lot of testimony on that, and I think that's the bill that, where we're finding out what our, describes the funding model. And every day that goes by, we learn more about how that's going to impact us long-term. Second item is, the State Board of Education voted this week to name Richard Ross, Ohio's next Superintendent of Public Education. He will replace Acting Superintendent of Public Instruction, Michael Sawyers. Third thing is, some people may know Jeff Harden. He was a State Board of Education member who wasn't in our district, but over in Claremont County, passed away last week, and we're sorry to hear that. His, one of the last things he did was to attend a meeting to get a vote in, or something like that, so he was very dedicated. I met with Senator Jones last week to talk about a number of education things, including education funding, and one of the things we talked about was the issue with the guarantee supposedly going away at some point. And she was very understanding and of our situation, and gave me some encouragement that there may be some work done to keep that from happening rapidly, because obviously, at Forest Hills, if that went away tomorrow, that would have a, that's a levy. So, that would have a dramatic impact on us. Last thing is, the State Legislative Conference is Wednesday in Columbus, and I'll be attending that, so I'll bring you more information back when we learn from things in Columbus. That's it. Thanks.
I move that we go on to Executive Session to discuss the appointment, deployment, dismissal, dispend, motion, demotion, or compensation of public employee or official, or the investigation of charges or complaints against the public.
Second.
Ms. Deffer.
Mr. Fruman.
Yes.
Mrs. Bissinger.
Yes.
Mrs. Hubner.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Dr. Heiss.
Yes. I thank everybody for coming. Our next regular meeting of the Board of Education is April 22, 2013, at 7 o'clock. Again, thank everybody for coming.